It's now called the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting to Order. Mr. Smith, if you could let people know how they can attend via Zoom.
Thank you, ma'am chair. During the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can use Zoom to raise your hand, or if you call in, simply press star nine on your phone and we'll pick up the call.
Okay, if you could please stand, Mr. Byerly, if you could leave us with a pledge, and Mr. Williams on the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we're grateful for the day we have in Powhatan County today, but we're also concerned about the many people that may be in harm's way with this impending storm hurricane. Please look out over us and protect us. That makes my prayer, amen.
Any requests to postpone or amend today's agenda? If not, I believe we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll now have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and full address for the record.
I'm Mark, the only regular.
Sure, that sounds great. Need your address, sir.
Okay, 2881 Anderson Highway, I think I got the house, though, in Woodbridge.
Okay.
If you drive by there, you probably don't see nothing but colored things. The old ordinances evidently were based on visibility and evidently they changed that. So anyway, I'm not much of a public speaker, I have ADD, and that'll be apparent shortly. I'm forty, we've been here forty-nine, we've been, I'm going to lose it, and it wasn't my parents' place, but it belongs to four of us now. And we've always been out of all these cars and takes, if any of y'all will read Mother Earth News Magazine, that'll pretty much set the tone of that, I've been raised. And Field Days and Bass, go on 250, if you've been over there, the old equipment, tractor pull, that's my kind of stuff. I don't hang around in bars, and I think I'm a pretty nice guy. But since the new ordinances, they've been, and places for sale, by the way, it became obvious a couple of years ago that we could not stay there. We've overgrown, I would last at, well, it's like six. And so, I was in reserves for six years, and I'm seventy-nine years older. In my whole life, I worked, I was a, last job I had was in the United States, I was a worker, so the United States, and then right after that, the economy folded, collapsed, and people losing their homes everywhere, all across the nation, I'm just here. And then, for some reason, I don't know, some of you may have been here, some may not, the Board of Supervisors, in that vein, when the economy was, there were no jobs, Powhatan County decided to rezone Brick 60 car up, and it was, I think it was agricultural residential at the time. And so they sent these notices, blah, blah, blah. And so we came up to the Board of Supervisors meeting, they come in, and everybody got three minutes to speak, standing room only, everybody that was here. And basically, after three minutes, it was blah, blah, blah. Your three minutes is up, somebody said, you have about three minutes? And everybody spoke their piece, and then they said, and I knew when the guys on the board, Paul Hagen used to run a liberty dial, just for the other one that had sixteen kids. Anyway, they said, well, we didn't know there was going to be so much opposition, and I don't know why they thought that, I mean, everybody knew it just to get more money. And so, we're not going to make a decision tonight, so nobody had a sense to say, the hell do not? So that anyway, a week or two later, they had a call, and nobody could come through, and it passed. So at that time, the taxes on that place, which is thirteen point nine acres, was about thirteen hundred dollars. Well, in a few months after that, when they got the, all the business into the paperwork done, the taxes went to seven thousand, three hundred dollars, and I'm with no job. I live there by myself, I belong to four brothers, and naturally, everybody thinks because I'm living there, I should get the taxes. Well, if you ain't got a job, you can't pay the taxes, so they're working jobs. So I had to file for social security two years early. In long story short, I think it turned out to be five hundred some dollars. Well, the taxes, to save the hell do you still can't pay the taxes? So I was lucky enough to have a couple of credit cards, and that's not paying the taxes, which I'm still having that money that I paid taxes for, and paying it up with credit cards now from ten years ago. And it's coming down, but the interest rate, you know, thirteen point nine percent interest. And so I didn't understand that. And so, when we moved here in seventy-two, I came up, and we bought some old cars and motorcycles and stuff like that, thirty, plenty of them, fourteen acres. And I talked to Mr. Ripley, who was his only man at that time, I don't know if you know him.
Hey, sir, I'm going to have to ask you, you got to kind of get to the point here, I'm sorry.
Anyway, his point was that he said, you got here just under the wire, because they're getting ready to pass a bunch of licenses. And he's the one who told me, your grandfather then, blah, blah, blah. So whatever they pass from now on won't affect you, as long as you don't have nuclear waste or anything to drive with, something like that. And so now, and so until last, May the twentieth, I guess, or twenty-sixth, we had a court, I had someone to go to court, and the judge was not very receptive to anything I had to say. And I said, well, I'm under the grandfather laws, in my life, that's me, I'm under the grandfather laws. And he says, that's a hearsay, oh, you're lying. And so, they gave me ninety days, and when they say clean up, they don't mean clean up. I mean, oh, you got batteries on here, I threw in batteries all the time, I got rid of most of the batteries, but anytime we got a good thing, buy a new battery, never trade one in. As long as they didn't turn it over, you know, it's a problem. But anyway, they gave me ninety days to clean up, or if it ain't done in ninety days, then they go, calling this company, they come in, and when they say clean up, they talk about bringing in bulldozers, crush everything you got, haul it away, and then charge me for it, and put it, what do you call it, did money against your deed of your place?
Yes.
This is a murder, Field Days have passed, literally justice for all. And so, and by the way, last Friday, what is it, I got a bunch of cars on the internet, blah, blah, blah.
You have another minute, sir.
Okay. One of my, two of my nephews, they helped me drag, I didn't want them out of a heart attack, but, and then, he did make it through, but they had a revival twice, this was a flat Friday. And so, I think I'm a pretty good guy. I got great kids, grandparents, babies, wave of grandpa, college friends, and the whole family depends on this place, and if they do what they say they're going to do, that's going to kill everybody in the family. Nobody's ever going anywhere to do anything. So I am asking to put a stop to this. And just, and the place has been for sale for two years, and I thought, because they saw that, when you look at it, people drive by, no, no, you don't know what's all about. So once it was for sale, it was obvious that when you sell a place, you can't go buy another place before you sell it, you got no money. So, it being it's for sale, and then the economy hasn't been bad enough when the real estate market is down, all I'm asking for is to wait until a place is sold, and all my stuff will be gone just as soon as I can find a place to put it. And all of this stuff is.
Sorry, sir, I have to cut you off, I'm giving you quite a bit of leeway, so thank you. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else, Mr. Smith, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. David Anderson.
You there, Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. David Anderson, 2366 Bellcrest Circle, I'd like to make three comments about the updated comp plan. First, I'd like you to consider revising the recent changes to the overview section on page four, in which the word vision was replaced with the word blueprint, and the word might was replaced with the word will. I believe that using the words blueprint and will runs counter to the state code as well as the comprehensive plan itself, and will ultimately create unnecessary conflict during the plan's use. The state code repeatedly states, quote, "The comprehensive plan shall be general in nature," end quote, and the word blueprint is specific and inflexible, particularly in light of a plan looking twenty or thirty years down the road. Additionally, your comprehensive plan uses the words could, should, recommends, encourages throughout, and not the word will. Once again, in my view, the comprehensive plan, a guidance tool, should promote guidance and flexibility, and hence, I think those words should be replaced. Second, from a visual perspective, the portrayal of a future land use map clearly indicates that your objective to keep Powhatan rule is accomplished. However, from a visual perspective, the portrayal of the map raises a question about your fiscal sustainability goals. I'd like you to consider asking the following question. Does the revised future land use map have enough designated and suitable commercial properties to reasonably achieve the plan's goal of attaining a fifteen percent commercial tax base? Third, I'd like to acknowledge the insight, professionalism, and service that Allison Oliver has provided me, as I have sought clarity on the plan. She continues to be the type of public servant that county administration and the citizens can be proud of. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Good job, Allison. Anyone else?
The rest is, it is clear. Thank you, Allison.
Anyone else, I'll close the public comment period. Does anybody have a pen, also, maybe? Okay, thanks, thank you, thank you. All right, now moving on to our workshop discussion. Continued discussion of comprehensive plan updates. Updates, chapter five, since seven through eleven, so if you guys want to jump into five, with housing, if I'm not mistaken. There. Whoever would like to start, jump for it.
Adam Schirr.
Yes, sir.
Page three, on the right-hand column in the background. Second sentence says, existing and planned developments in a courthouse village and near the Route 288, 711 interchange, including townhouses, apartment, low maintenance, single-family homes, these higher density developments are.
To take low maintenance, single-family, to use higher density developments are within designated growth areas served by public, they are served by public.
We have no apartments planned.
Correct, so you can start that.
We have no low maintenance, single-family homes, that's really a, that's really a decision made by the development community, whether they want to offer that. We talk about where homes will be and the density, but really not whether they are for age-restricted or low maintenance, that's just not something that we can impact. We don't have a way to say, rent, build, you know, this kind of, this kind of development. If the marketplace is there, you expect the developer to take advantage of that. I have any problems with it, just, we can't, I don't see how we can push on to make that happen. We can provide places, we can provide sizes and density that might encourage that, we can't really make that decision.
Should we say encourage, or just?
I don't have any problems with it, we just can't make it happen, that's my point.
If we want to strike it, that's something I should point out, it says existing also, so we do have apartments. So I'm not sure what's changed. She's saying it's existing also, so we do have apartments at 288.
And villages.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right.
Going down to aging in place, the last sentence, providing greater housing options will allow older residents. How do we provide?
Approving fifty-five plus developments.
I don't, I have any problems with it, but how, we don't provide it, the marketplace provides it, okay? We can encourage it, that's something we'd like to see.
Encourage providing, okay? All right.
Going to page four. Affordability. Maintaining quality affordable housing so the county can attract and reverse workforce. We already have a workforce, we export fourteen thousand people every day, three thousand come in for 711. We don't have to provide for diversity already, yeah? But actually, our concern is to provide jobs for those people.
Do you want to eliminate the first sentence, and just start with traditionally, the Commonwealth characterizes?
Yes, that would be fine with me.
Do you have any? Okay.
The next thing I have is on page seven, so if somebody has something.
Anybody have anything? Drop in.
Okay, Mark, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Page five. Strategy, HS1B, encourage developers to incorporate universal design principles into new construction, creating housing that allows older residents to age in place. We really want to do that, I mean, do we do it today? Because this is a whole global financial comprehensive plan. I don't think we ever had that conversation, if I'm wrong.
I mean, I think with the population that's going to be over sixty-five, it's a growing population, I think it's probably a discussion we should have.
Just asking because this is in the comprehensive plans since 2010, is this something, after it comes in, we say, we really want to encourage you to universal design. I don't think that happens, I don't think it has. And again, going back to Bill's point, this is nothing new, this was around back when I was working for the Virginia Department of Rehabilitation Services, so that goes back a hundred years. This is something that was counted back then. So, I'm not sure it does anything, but I just wanted to bring that up. If you can, take it out, I don't care.
Why don't we just get rid of the universal design? Encourage developers to incorporate principles into new construction, creating housing that allows older residents to age in place. Is that your point, this line, universal design?
Yeah, again, to the point is, you know, going back to Bill. The developers, the builders, they know what's popular market today. They know what they need to do to be able to bring a product in that's going to have scalability, that's going to have product that be public wants, they know.
So do you want to eliminate universal?
Like I said, it's hard to go all the way down, it's a long discussion.
All right, so just take out universal.
Okay, if we look at strategy, the second strategy, second objective, first strategy, SSHS point two A. Services including sewer and water should be made available for residential development for the focused growth areas indicated in special area plans to allow for higher density of residential development. That's not really what we're doing, not what our land use plan is.
We do have the two economic development areas, and the one area in 711, so they would have to hook up technically.
Right.
You know?
But we're trying, we're trying to, we're trying, we practically want to get away out of Ward 2, okay, to get hookups in 60 East. And we don't have any availability in 711. So this is talking about, this to me is part of what's left over, where we were chasing high-density development. We have some modest areas that we still have high density.
So what do you all want to do?
I would simply, I would simply take out to allow higher density residential development.
Just get rid of the, to allow for higher density of residential development?
Yep, that's what I would strike, I would leave the rest of it in there.
Are you all fine with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else on that chapter?
HS2, are we really pursuing diverse housing types? Are we reacting to what the marketplace? We're down, we're down to townhouses and single-family dwellers and duplexes, that's the three kind of options we've got in our land. Townhouses are only in the economic development areas.
Yeah, in the gorge.
No, not the listed questions, only the questions.
Do you want to strike that whole thing?
Why, I'm just raising, is this really what we're doing?
I mean, for me, encouraging a developer to provide a mixture of diversity, I don't think it's a bad thing.
No, but the land use plan really doesn't allow for that, that's my point.
Whatever you guys want to do. Do you all want to keep it or take it out?
I, I, I don't think we're doing that, that's my only concern. If we're doing it, that's fine, but what I can see, we're, that's not what we're doing.
We haven't really had any, not a lot of developments come in.
No, but we only have three types of housing types that are still allowed, townhouse, duplex, and single-family, or you can have apartments down where it's rich. I think we took apartments out of the economic development area.
We did with the density, with the density, we did, take them out.
Yeah, because we reduced the density to four. The density was nine, we reduced it to four.
We understand that, when we get to that section, you'll see that apartments have been struck.
The word apartment, yes.
Let me go back to what Bill said about that. We have taken it right from our land use designation, economic development, that we need to fix something, because I can't imagine that we wouldn't want to have potentially more apartments, you know, down there, in these 288 and that area.
We struck it.
That's just it, if we have done that, then we need to go back and revisit that, because I don't think that's what we want to do.
Yes, we had a long discussion over this, we discussed this with the economic opportunity, the maximum density is four units per acre, you're not going to be building apartments.
We discussed it, I would like to go back and revisit it.
We're going to get to it, that's in chapter eight, we will get to it.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
But land use, chapter eight workshop. So, all right, are we going to take this out, or are we going to keep this in here? Why don't we just leave this in here for a notch? Natural and cultural resources.
And we have the piece that was moved into heritage and natural.
Yep.
I don't have any problems with it at all. I have some questions on the next page. All I want to do is make you aware at this point, when we get to land use, we'll come back. We're using too many different names for the same thing, okay? We've got like four different names, okay? So we have, here we have natural resources, conservation, okay? So when we get to the land use piece, what I want to do is take all of those and come up with either one or two names, so that each, so that the chapters are consistent with each other, so you know what they're talking about. Okay, so that's one. Two, and the, on page twelve, in the box, understanding natural resources. On the left-hand, right-hand corner of the column, it talks about property zone eight twenty and eight ten, or rural residential, that are located in these areas, should not be rezoned to higher intensity zoning sections. It's a little bit more than that, eight ten allows for pretty broad use of, okay? So you can, you can, not have a rezoning and have a situation with much higher intensity. And so, I would like to take out the word rezoned, okay? So that are located with it there should not, should not have a higher intensity of use, which is what we're talking about. Frank, you can have an asphalt plant, okay, without rezoning, so it's a C U P. So, so that located in these areas should not be, we should not move them to a higher intensity of use, that's where I'm going, I don't know if it works for you.
The only thing is, that would get kind of convoluted, because in eight ten, we can do a certain amount of things by right, so how would that correlate with our zoning ordinance?
I don't know that, that's a little bit of a reason why we write our zoning.
I mean, you know.
Sorry, I actually can suggest perhaps striking this entire whole point, at least the beginning, one is to talk about the problem is conservation subdivisions, and I really, really like that idea, and it was effective, that implement more than they currently are, and it's somewhere that the competition might be increasing. But I don't want any sort of thing of complex going to say, we could possibly add like one extra unit or something that's going to influence the possibility of a conservation subdivision occurring.
Remember what we're talking about, we're not talking about all of eight ten, we're talking about these, these very sensitive ecological areas, that's what we're talking about. Okay, and there, this is about protecting them.
Sure.
Okay?
And the next point, it talks about the conservation subdivisions, so we're probably going to make sure those two do work together. I can see that, you say, here we say you can't do anything more intense, and the next point would say, if you already do something more intense, we want it to be this style, so probably somehow make these two work.
To me, it's more about the use rather than where the rezoning. We want to protect these areas, okay, then we really can't be pushing, whatever vehicle that could be used, we can't be pushing that to higher use, and what you do have a right to use in all of these is your by right, single-family home, okay, that, that you have.
Well, what would you, just to play devil's advocate, say you're over here and you want to have a cattle farm. A cattle farm, for instance, in your queue, that's a by right use in eight ten, do you consider that intense?
If it was a feedlot, yes, okay, if you had a pasture with cattle, no.
Okay.
So those work, okay? A solar farm, yes, okay, I would consider that a higher intensity use.
So just so, you know, I would consider more density a higher intensity use as well. The density would also be a higher intensity use, in my opinion. So one of the things that I'm interested in this cohesive meeting revision is that if we have a ten acre, you know, a hundred acres, right, it's eight ten, and we give this for conservation subdivision, it's going to have some quotient, I give them an extra lot or two to make that project happen, and I don't want this to kill that idea.
That doesn't kill it, okay? But in these particular areas, there's some restrictions on what you can do. We have not ruled out residential development at all, okay? And there's some confusion, and we'll see it later on, and when we talk about conscious, in terms of density, conservation subdivision, we've confused the lot with size and density, okay? We've confused the lot with size and density, okay? So we'll, we'll get to that. So we leave this, this, remind us, we leave this way it is?
Yeah, we'll leave it.
Uh, on page 13, we have a question. Require connectivity between open spaces adjoining communities when appropriate. Now, what everybody has to remember is on conservation subdivision ordinance, we exempt the developer from having to comply with connectivity.
Oh, B dot.
But, 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 okay, that, that's our ordinance, we said, you don't have to do that, okay? So we'll, we'll get to the B dot later on when we talk about that. So, so this is saying, should we require it? I'm just telling you, our ordinance says, you don't have to do it. I'd like for them to be.
This, this one, I think, so looking more at this after we talked last time, usually when we talk about connectivity, we're thinking roads. I think this means the open space, that's the intent, we find a developed open space here, and then another result now is here we have open space. Ideally, we want them to connect, so we don't have a little bit of space, little bit, little bit of space, we have a cord where it's connected, and a bigger cohesive. So I think the language is a little confusing, but I think this is meant, let's try and join our open spaces together, when it's neighboring communities, rather than each having their own side of pockets of open space. I think that's what, that this is getting at, but again, connectivity works confusing, so we might change that. I think the goal is combining open spaces to some of the, sure.
I just, I just want to get confused over what our ordinance says, one thing, I think that's, that's my one thing.
Okay.
Uh, page 14.
I think, uh, for my, or is this, I have a little question there. Uh, in our 3C, or the former, in our 3C, explore the use of reservation mixed use developments. When we first discussed this, we talked about adding that into the housing chapter.
Just drop it.
But then we got rid of mixed use, yes. We got rid, we got rid of mixed use other than.
And the economic, the two.
Economic development, but the big, the big one was in, in the village, you know, we eliminated that whole.
Okay.
Um, on 14, the NR5, the strategy NR5D, require all new, new high density, higher density subdivisions, two dwellings per unit acre or more to have pedestrian bicycle facilities that connect to trails, sidewalks, neighboring subdivision surface. This is, the bulk of this will be in the village, okay? And so my concern there is, how do we, I don't have any problems with what it's suggesting, but we really, really need a plan, okay? For the village, so that, so that it connects together rather than just being some lines on the paper. So I don't, I don't know how you, how we get to that, but if you need a plan so that if this happens and they're required to do it, it's going to fit with somebody else somewhere down there.
I mean, I don't know where your best place would be, but something, a goal somewhere else to develop a, a master sidewalk, master trail. Yeah, we wouldn't want developer A to sit sidewalk on the front, and it's good on the street, but this isn't back, and the middle's level six, no.
I'm in the chapter eight, I'm in, I'm showing 14, man.
Turn down to strategy NR6A, increase usage of energy conservation measures and green building techniques by encouraging participation for builders and green certification programs such as earthcraft lead in the leadership in energy environmental design and neighborhood development. Go back again, I know the ideology of this, and I actually know the supervisor they came from back when this was put in. My question is, Sam, what are we doing that today? No.
They, they're bringing in the development that needs this, or they don't want?
I would get rid of that whole comment, or that whole section personally.
And just things we could do, currently, no, we're not, not doing anything together.
Okay, wait. Not even being discussed, that's something you feel like, you know, we've got to put out in front of them when they come in the door. Next, go to the next one. Encourage the use of low impact development techniques to protect water quality. Now, are we doing that, or is that something that they have to do in conformity with DEQ?
A lot of it's built to that, yeah, or, or storm.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're already meeting these requirements that have come down from the state, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, so it doesn't do anything.
So, real quick, actually, you could, is, for instance, if a developer came in and for their parking lot, they wanted to put instead of pavement, they wanted to do like, um, pavers and stuff like that, so there are opportunities outside of DEQ. I think I would actually probably leave that one in, I'm not saying we do it, but there are things that you can do outside of, you know, rain gardens and things like that.
Do we do that today?
Currently, no, but, so, Mr. Cox.
I mean, if you're going to leave it in, my, my point is, okay, let's go ahead and take it down to the next level and put it in there. Where it's actually enforceable in the subdivision zoning laws. So that's a question, I'm not leaving this right here just broadly, and it's not doing anything because it never gets.
It's in our zoning ordinance, it is in our zoning ordinance, some of these. So, I, I, I don't care, if you want to take it out, take it out, I'm just saying, there are, I don't think it's a bad thing to.
It's something you have an interest in requiring. Is it something you have an interest in requiring?
Well, that's, that's why I'm trying to have this discussion.
It can, it can also be something that's whole around it, the rezonies coming in and like, it could be a exonerator, that you can point to and say, this is one thing we want, if something.
I'm saying that that's what we want to do, and include that in our review with the developer, then I'm fine with leaving it in. But if we're not doing it, and we don't want to do it, then I'm not interested in just having these statements out there that give the appearance that we're doing something, and we're not.
It could be useful, so maybe we'll be mindful of that.
Okay, then leave it in, leave it in, if it can be useful and you think it's worthwhile, leave it in. I just want to make sure that we've had that discussion.
I think it provides extra support.
All right, let's go to the next one. Strategy NR6C, support alternative water supply and conservation projects such as construction, use of strong water, reuse of gray water, and replenishment of wastewater where practical. What say you, Sam?
Might have to ask public works about that one, currently on the planning side, we're not, you know, definitely not do that. Encouraging people to do that on their projects.
I mean, it sounds nice, but I mean.
Generally, I don't like happening when you're running out of water. You have to talk about attractive water spots.
What about like Sudsy Malone, do they reuse their water? Okay.
But that's, that's an economic thing for them.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, so, so those, the, uh, those.
Right, they reuse, reuse, I would be a proponent of using not the potable water that we're paying for to water lawns and everything else. I, I say we keep it in, but I'm not going to be a hell of a guy.
We got, we got, we've bailed some with the decision.
All right, so you guys, I, I say leave it in, whatever, what do you all want to do?
Leave it in, I have no problem with it, you know, it's encourage, support.
Some of these things, you know, we have been doing them or focusing on them, we also have so many goals, I think now compared it down to your goals, we'll be better able to focus on some of these and push them and use them. So I would say, you know, I think we've done a good job to focus some of it, but some of it that we haven't used so far might be okay to leave in. Now we, we will be able to highlight the same factors since there's not just so many.
Right, right.
But let me pick up on what Karen said, so Sudsy's going to redo this, okay? So the new guys that came down the street, what if they're not? Should we, should we tell them to? I mean, I mean.
Personally, yeah.
Okay, well, if we, if we, you're going to tell them to.
I would encourage them to.
Tell them to recite it, is that what he said?
Yeah.
If you want to tell them to, then we should have this in.
Okay, 16. Index of historical, historic landmarks, um, let's see, yep, St. Luke's is in there, I was looking for that, that's in. What about Old Palatine Church, you know, received an invitation, what was it, to their 200, 250th, I believe, anniversary?
So is it, is it on register or potentially?
No, it's not, yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's inside feature potentially.
You could look into that, it is, Adam.
Look into it, that's, that's not a very, not a lot of.
We haven't, we didn't do this list since a couple of months ago, and this is, does come from the natural register, there's also eligible sites, so I can just look at.
Turn on Old Palatine Church.
Anything else in that chapter, or are we in land use?
I'm in land use, so I'm going in 20, on page 23. There on the right hand corner of the column, which is how to use this chapter, neighborhood residential order mixed use.
I have the same thing, sir, Mr. Cox. I'm at 27. I'm at 26. All right, we're going to have to define what is mixed use. If we went around the table right now, we would have probably five or six different definitions of what is mixed use. So I would like to see that defined someplace, so that we're all on the same page when that term gets brought up, you know, in the comp plan, that we know what we're talking about. So I'm not sure we're all in agreement.
We're not in agreement, wait, can we get an agreement?
Say it again.
Can we come to an agreement so that I can't define it? Otherwise, we're just going to get by interpretation.
No, no, what, what I want to do is, you know, that's a topic for discussion. Staff, you know, I'm not catching you blindside, you know, you can come back with what you recommend, and then we can have a discussion where we either buy in, or we want to pare it back, or add something, but I would like for y'all to do that, okay?
Yeah, I, I would second what Mr. Williams is saying too. You guys tell us what you think mixed use is, and we'll go from there. And, and it's a good starting point for everyone.
Because if you go down to objective LU dot three, establish and maintain a compact pattern of mixed uses within residential and business development at specific focal points along Route 68 and along 711 East and 288. So again, you're going to see mixed use brought up continuously through the chapters. I will make sure that I know what y'all's definition is when you say that.
Page 27.
Just real quickly, Bill, if I may, if I may, on page 26, again, mixed use design standards, you know, under LU5, that's another example where mixed use is being brought up. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Cox.
If we look at the recommended residential density range for rural areas, so it's from one unit per 10 acre to one unit per eight acres. The density, so how do we get one unit per eight acres?
So that's as high as you can get if you do a conservation subdivision, based on our density focuses for setting aside 70%.
That's, that's, that's the number, number of rural houses, okay? But we set the density based on, okay, that's a bonus, a formula driven.
Correct, and that's the output of the bonus, is up to one unit for eight acres.
So you're not taking and considering the open space as being preserved, so you're just doing the development part of it, the development land itself?
Including open space.
You, it is included.
Yeah, so if you set aside 70% of the space, you include that open space into the calculation, you can get up to one unit for eight acres, including that open space. You can have 40,000 square foot blocks. So that's just a nice.
Take me through that again, I just, let's take this 100 acres, okay?
Yes, if you have 100 acres, and you set aside 70% of that, you're left with 30 acres. You would typically only be able to run 100 acres, get 10 lots, but we provide a 25% bonus, so you could get 12. 12, uh, houses.
12, yes, for the 100 acres.
And you set aside 70 acres, you have 30 acres you can develop on, and the lots have to be a minimum of 40,000 square feet, so you have 12 lots in that 30 acres. But the, the whole output would be one unit for eight acres.
Hold on, hold on, you just said, you know, if we go to 12 units, that's 100 acres, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so why wouldn't I be, wouldn't be 12 over 100?
It would be, right? That's one for eight acres.
Okay, that, that would, that would get you there, okay, fair, all right, thank you. So it's one unit for eight acres, okay?
Or point, 12 units per acre.
That's where you always trip me up. I know we can do the middle gymnastics on the back end, I had you go that way. I'm much more concrete on the front end, okay? So now, going back to Mr. Cox's question, does that answer your questions, Cox?
Yes.
And we did put a note in there just saying that's only for conservation subdivision.
My next question from page 33.
Anybody have anything before that?
Oh, no, oh, no. Bill was going far and leaves there. Page 30.
Our metal design, new public facilities should include sustainable and green design. Where'd they come from? I know it came from 2010, so I think it's, no, the whole, I don't think we need that.
That guy's coming up now, like the fire station.
I'm sorry, Bill, where if you want to go.
I wanted to go to what I introduced before, 33, natural conservation. Now, we've got, as I understand it, I've written down, we've got natural, the, the terms we're using, okay, this is about the, the terms we're using. We've got natural conservation, natural resources, prime conservation areas, and natural, natural conservation. So what I want to do is get the conservation map area, okay? Those terms, same with this, okay? Natural conservation doesn't appear anywhere in that other section. I don't care what you call it, I just want, want it to be consistent, so that it's clear what I'm talking about as I move from one, you know, move from one area into this area.
I've got the map up here, and I shall point this out, the priority conservation areas.
Okay, so go to the top, go to the top of the map, okay? So this is natural resources, prime conservation areas, and this says natural conservation.
Yeah, so, okay, so the, um, the protected plants, the darker green that's showing on that, that's on the future land use map, and that is what is natural conservation. But this lighter green, the priority conservation areas, it is not on the future land use map, so I don't think that it has.
It is on the future land use.
Not the light green.
I see what she's saying, yeah, it's not, it's, okay, yeah, it's not.
It is part of our future land use map, if you pull it up, you will find, there's a whole bar, you hit on that, and it will show you priority conservation areas. In our GIS system.
Yeah, because it's on the GIS, but.
It's what she's saying, it's not here.
Right.
And it won't, so the dark green on this map is the same as the dark green on that map, so we can call those the same thing if we want.
I just, I just want to use the same terminology, yes.
But otherwise, that isn't used anywhere else, so if we're comfortable with priority conservation areas, then we can keep that word.
You can keep any words you want, okay, I just, I got, I got natural. I just, I got natural resources.
Give me one word.
But I think what she's saying, they're actually technically different, they're different, so they're not the same thing, so you shouldn't call them the same thing, I think that's what she's saying.
What we can call the same thing is protected lands and natural conservation, because those are exactly the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're exactly the same, so I can change those.
So we meet those maps, or to meet.
Combine.
No, you can't combine, the priority conservation map needs to stack, okay? But we still have natural conservation and natural resources.
Well, that's just the name of the.
The name of the title.
So we can change the name of the map.
Well, I just, to move from one to the other, I wanna make sure I'm talking about the same thing, not.
I think if we change the name from natural resources to something else, it would offer more clarity, instead of taking up the word natural, and do something different.
On this map, I'm gonna change protected lands to natural conservation, or vice versa. Natural conservation, protected lands, and future land use, because those are the same. That can be called whatever you want. You can make it whatever you want.
Bill's map.
Actually, it's Bob Roddy's map. And his son.
So.
That's something I'd like for y'all to do, is find something, you have to, okay, that deals with.
Pick a name, that would be kind of fun.
I think it is kind of bothering him, if I could see some second.
Yeah, I think we'll still run it.
Page thirty-five. Community character, we start talking about bellmead there, and we've taken bellmead out and put another section there, that's what we do. Okay, this is, this is now private property in.
The whole second paragraph.
I'm. For rural areas. They're saying that conservation subdivisions will be our way of developing residential development. Ninety-five percent of the county. Never go. Never go, we have no experience, okay? We don't know market acceptance, I like the idea, but we haven't, no, we've never done one. And I, I can't get comfortable unless somebody can give me some real information, why we would bet ninety-five percent of the county on something that we have no experience with. That, that's my concern, okay? We have one that's in the pipe, the first thing we did was find out we had a problem with PDOT, okay? And so I don't have an, I don't have an alternative, okay? Yeah, we still have the by right, one unit per ten acres. But to, to take the, we're gonna go all the way over and say, you know, conservation subdivisions, what you're gonna be, if you expand an existing one, it's gotta be a conservation subdivision, we have no, no experience with. That, I can't support that, okay? And I need, I need something else, I wanna, I don't wanna get rid of this, okay? But I don't want it to be the only option. If we, if we built ten of them and we had five to experience, that would be just fine.
So you want them to bring back more information, or offer another alternative, like the RR five back in, or?
We, we need to look at what we're doing today, okay? And we're taking it, what this done is eliminated all that went there, okay? Well, I have, we only have so many things.
Yeah, but not all options, yeah.
And so, what should, you know, what should we be doing? Okay, understanding that with conservation subdivisions, we're just kind of going out into the dark, with a good idea and a great thought.
But we don't know the applicability of it.
No, we don't know whether the marketplace is going to decide it likes it either. Maybe they decide, well, you know, open land's fine, but what I really want is my pool and my clubhouse. Because that's what, that's what open space really is to develop, it's, it's not the golf course, okay? It's not the barn, okay? It's not the clubhouse and pools, it's open space and trails. Since I live in that world, I think it's great, but my sister owns her tennis court, okay? It's just, it's simple. So.
Yeah, I'm with you, I think one of the things that we've been, I was trying to learn about is, PDOT has developed so far, it has impacted real construction, so that's one of the things for that is, how much road we have to go into to hit a certain number of lots. I think some change in the number of densities is probably what the TICE build out, what that metric is, I don't know yet. One of the things that I'm trying to figure out at the PDOT development is that US people stub roads that connect to adjacent lot, and these scenarios that might not be feasible, somebody built their seventy percent reservation here, somebody built their seventy percent reservation here, and they have stub roads that can't connect, the state system is a huge problem.
Well, I'm also concerned about the fact that conservation subdivisions are only administratively handled, so we really need to think about whether we wanna put another subdivision in that feeds into several, okay? And this, in fact, could be done, okay? Without any oversight in terms of what it's doing to our infrastructure, particularly our road structure, which are probably our most, they worry me more than anything else. So they are essentially by right, okay? Y'all administer how they get it done, but you really can't stop them, okay, to beat the rules. And so now we have the potential impact on infrastructure without planning. So these, these are not things that are not, the decane will come, can't get through, but I don't think we have given enough time and discussion to this, in particular, since it's ninety-five percent of our county. It's, it's a good idea, it's just I'd like to see it better developed, I need, I need some help to be there.
In Rochester, I created a planning development density bonus system. So earlier, we were talking about, maybe partly will make it, that could be a bonus. Whether you care enough about making, going sick of the energy, these things can get out, or if you, and those financials. That also revolved with the government, right? So I'll put it in your court of control to do. I just wonder whether this board has an interest in creating something like that in future ordinance? Because what's, we're going through here and saying, okay, I'm asking you to actually write permitful papers, and I think about crossing it out, I think to myself, well, the future ordinance, is that something that you might want to incentivize? It doesn't have to be just that, it could be something else, it could be road infrastructure.
You're saying incentivize, I'm sorry, what are you talking about?
So in a, in a planning unit development, you can incentivize, it's potentially not the right word, the legal term would be, that they can achieve, if they build something for you, they can get X number of units, which financially incentivizes them to come and say, we wanna do this development, and we'll put it in test scores, because we've incentivized it, because you can get ten percent more units if you put in a test score. You can, you can monkey around those numbers, whatever percentage you think is, is right, but it can induce development, and induce the metrics, and where you get some positive trade-offs while something gets built out. It just has to do with the comfort level of this board with the density that that by the company to make the financials work. But if this was in a future ordinance, it would be back in your court, it wouldn't be by right, at least it'd be somebody comes forward and says.
Remember what's, we've dialed it back.
Sure.
Okay, remember what's driving the conservation subdivision, okay? While it, it's one unit of eight units, you know, we get to eight tenths of a unit per acre, okay? What we're really trying to do is preserve open space and not nibble very much on, you know, one unit per ten acres. Okay, so it's continuing to stay there, and it's not designed to push large developments, okay? With lots of lots into rural areas, where we don't have the ability to service them over there.
Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
No, I think you answered your own question. What are your goals? Your goal is for this rural area, you know, is, you said we wanted to have open space, type of small by requirements. Well, back to what you said, Frank said, you know, impact on the infrastructure primarily, but it's, so like Frank said, it's units per acre in it. Okay? So you put the two together as, okay, we want open space, and we're worried about the number of units per acre, and being able to minimize those impacts on infrastructure. So the question that comes in, okay, what type of development is being done today in rural counties that reflect those goals? Or especially of open space, under the number of units per acre, controlling the impacts on your roads, okay? Because we know in Palatine County, we don't have the best roads, okay? So we're concerned about that. So my, my suggestion would be to, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, somebody's already doing this, for me, say that before. Maybe it's Hanover is doing something in their rural areas that we could emulate, that we can learn from. Going back to Bill's point, if you're hanging your hat on these conservation by right subdivisions, you know, as we've learned, you know, the big bang was by Rose, the developers, well, Hanover's doing it, how are they doing? How are they making it work? Or if there's a new accounting, like Nelson County, how are they making it work? You know, but you gotta start off with what your goals are, and Bill has articulated, and so if Frank, you put those two together, then what is it that you bring forward in a way of development that meets those overarching goals? Frank, so you're here going down with your thoughts, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, I think there's certainly, I love the idea of conservation subdivision, because they get unique, and the idea that you observe that as a place, it's an amazing opportunity. Though the current metrics, they're very few means, like average builders. Yeah, one where you just wanna put it in the driveway, it's out to the road, and we're trying to say, hey, would you please just do, do a few hundred for lots, and, you know, just not feel like, oh, we want to, it's too expensive. So I agree that, I think, that this area that gets conserved has to go up in density to make the money work for that person. But I don't think the provision of this board is provided to those high intensities. So I'm kind of an investor, trying to figure out, I'm still thinking, I'm trying to work towards your end of your.
Okay, I can tell you there's one supervisor, I don't wanna go back to the old model that we had, before the planning commission changed this, Bill and Karen, long planning commission. You know, we had R five everywhere, right? None of it was coming in, back in the go-go years, District One in the east. All the subdivisions that came in a period of time were to the west, they're being built out there. So I don't wanna go back to that model. But there, there's something out there that we can use, and I agree with Bill, we don't wanna hang our hat on one type of development, but at the same time, if there's other things out there that we can do that meet these broad goals, I wanna know about it, okay?
I do think we need some other alternative other than a conservation subdivision, and I don't know what it is, but yeah, I mean, we need something, yeah.
I just said, that meant the overarching goals of, you know, number of units per acre.
Mr. Williams was talking.
Let me finish what I'm saying, I don't interrupt you here. All I'm saying is, we got the overarching goals, and that, you know, come back with something that gives us more alternatives, we're in agreement.
That's, I echo that sentiment. Okay, all right, moving on.
All the way up to forty-four, you know, one of my favorite sections. As I understand it, the planning commission will be discussing this month, one more time, hopefully by time, what they have been talking about and recommending, so, so apart that it will then get advertised. The question is, should we be tinkering with this at all?
Maybe wait and see how it lines up with what they come up with.
Well, if, if it's an ordinance, and it will, it will carry strength.
More than this.
So I'm concerned about the language in this, but let's wait and see what happens. Crossroads. One of the, one of the things is, as I read this, okay? And then I look at the zoning ordinance, and look at the uses, and CUP uses, they don't make sense. Crossroads, page forty-five, on the left-hand column, the next to last paragraph. Crossroads provide small but historic focal points in rural landscape, driven historic character and function, crossroad, port hole, scale and magnitude, new development, they should be consistent, scale and magnitude existing, so it does not overwhelm historic character, a small-scale restaurant, breakfasts. And then we go out and we look at what we, you know, we have in McDonald's. You can have a drive-through restaurant, okay? So if we wanna, just, that's, that's for another discussion, okay, when we look at ordinances. The description that's here is not really what I'm seeing in our uses, okay? Our uses became much more expansive than it should be.
To address the zoning.
Sheriff.
Yes.
Where are you seeing McDonald's, where are you?
You, you won't see McDonald's.
I know, but we're looking.
You won't see that anywhere.
Okay, but where is it, for total, for appropriate, specific uses?
No, you won't see it in here, because it's a zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance either allows things like a drive-through restaurant, okay? Which is not consistent with the one which is in here, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so we need to wait until we get to the zoning ordinance to fix this, would you say?
Correct.
Just, just to be clear, if, that's only committed as a conditionally use, by right use.
But he, that's what he said, the CUP.
I don't, I don't think we have a word for it, McDonald's, crossroads. I don't see it happening. We can't see the golden arches, I think.
But we talk about small, small uses and stuff, and you look at, you look at the uses of CUP, they don't make any sense, okay? So that's a discussion for the ordinance. Everybody understands that in a zoning ordinance, crossroads says approximately a half a mile from the intersection. Everybody cool with that, I don't know what approximately means, but.
You were taking.
It means, it means, okay.
That's one of the shit words, maybe.
It's being close enough, right?
Let's get my feet.
No, I mean, whatever the matter, I'm gonna be me, just for your application, I swear to me.
On page forty-nine, this is out, this is neighborhood residential section.
Hold it, hold it, yeah.
So what we do have it.
We took out residential, neighborhood residential.
Thank you. That's what you're like. Seems like I remember that discussion. So we could do the same thing with apartments down there that we did for neighborhood residential, couldn't we? That was my only point.
It's mostly already developed, which I think is why we kept it up there.
Yeah.
I think I did wrong. Sorry?
Is that the only place it is? Is that the only place it is?
Yes, sir.
It's someone?
There were two places originally, one's six in east, and we took it as east.
Right.
And it's still a little really left in seven eleven.
Right.
It's not, yeah.
It's not.
It would never happen, well, I think.
That was one, that was a problem, it wasn't gonna happen.
That was the problem.
Allison, if you would, don't let us forget about the economic development, Easter two eighty-eight, and being able to do apartments like we did with neighborhood residential.
I'm not following you with that, Mr. Williams. BT, are we talking about that, adding a village center back in, or changing the density? Yeah, yeah, but we're going to keep that in, I don't think that's what, is that what you were talking about?
No, I wish I was the easiest vehicle to do this, all I want to do is make sure their apartments are a use that you can apply in the.
That's different. Get 7-Eleven, yeah. What then?
Whatever it is, that's all I want, is the ability to have apartments as permitted use, and they're East of 288.
We'll have to change the way that it's written in economic development section, so we're not considered at all.
Correct, so this is a big change. Okay, all right, so yeah, that's, then your density is going to change for that economic opportunity in the 7-Eleven growth area, just so everybody's clear on that, that's important.
When we get to economic development or economic opportunity, we should.
We've got to talk about that, okay? Yes, yeah, yeah, that's a big, big change. Okay.
I'm at page 57. What page, Bill?
57.
57. Gateway business, left-hand column, last paragraph. Sidewalks and trails should connect businesses with nearby destination, allowing employees and customers to walk for short trips or exercise. And so, what are we doing with Starbucks? We're going to require them to put in sidewalks, okay? That's, that's a gateway business, okay? They're kind of an island, so how do, how does that work for them?
Well, should we say should be encouraged? Whereas applicable.
No, there's, there's nothing, I mean, you really want sidewalks on 60?
Yes, it's not a requirement, it's just maybe in some areas where we have a big business that may be appropriate to have a little, like Westchester comments, not saying we're getting Westchester comments.
Right, right, yeah, but I.
But you've had something like that. So this isn't requiring anything, so.
So maybe sidewalks and trails should be encouraged in appropriate business centers where, where appropriate.
But we have Starbucks going in, I'm all, so what, what, what are they building? They building any of this?
Probably not.
Okay, I bet we haven't had that discussion with them.
Well, I, well, I guarantee it will come up, but then.
So we will have a discussion.
Right, sure. When we had Stone Ridge come in, Brett, what did we do over there? Did we do walk and trails? Did we do sidewalk, did we do a sidewalk loop? Okay. If we're all, say we're going to do it, it's going to be six ways from a base zone, dogma mask, and is, that we do it. That's, that's my only point.
So this is just, but this doesn't make us, this does not allow us to require it. This would just be a saying, hey, this is a goal that we can consider doing.
Because they're not going to do it, I tell you that. If, if you know they're not going to be altruistic and volunteer to do this.
Moving along, economic opportunity.
We're talking about gateway business on page 60, showing a gateway business model. A whole lot larger than anything we're, that, that doesn't represent anything that we're going to build. Sixty, it's just, it's just, just too large.
So get a picture more reflective, sort of like you've done with the others.
What was it? That like six something we, we might build? This isn't it.
Absolutely, I think, one thing, we're trying to find a picture that's exemplary of all these, see a little, little.
I don't understand how it happened, okay, but it, but it, this is, wow, this is, you want something, oh, I'll go do some big stuff.
Yes, we can, we can probably find something better to scale with, use a couple.
Well, well, let's, let's play it, play it back, you know, Brett, if you broke this picture up and you did it by sections to illustrate the different points we brought, we wouldn't have a problem with it, would we?
No.
Okay, so I think, you know, to the point, this is just, you know, to illustrate how you do these various components of the developments, not saying we'll have a development of the size.
Yeah, how like seven, the bottom is broken, now separate, we could have a few more, do a smaller example, example development and have a few more.
Long, long as you, everybody understands the context.
Page 61, the next page. Here it talks about notes, provide multiple vehicular connections to adjacent properties. We're not doing that Starbucks in up there.
They have to connect to the Radies, that's part of their property conditions.
No, to all the parcels, I think, this.
But we do normally require them to stub, whether they build a stub, we don't necessarily have to build it, but we make them dedicate on their plan that needs something developed to stay loaded.
With these steps, okay. Move down on that notice, you get to, pass signage, you say distributing parking throughout the site so there's not a continuous strip of parking lots along major third, there's stamp. With Commerce Center, you're supposed to have parking in the rear on the sides. So where do we get into, and what will be, if we change this correctly, the Commerce Center will include light industrial uses, okay? We've already talked about that, so my guess is we want the same time parking situation for everything on 60 that's in gateway business, which would be not in front, sign and back. And so, so we start talking about distributing parking. We're really talking about putting it on the side or in the back, not between 60 and the.
I don't recall that, did we require it in Commerce Center to the side of the back?
Yeah.
Do we have that?
Because I raised the question the other day, and we had an industrial use, and since it was industrial use, that's the reason they're parking in front, okay? And it's not required in industrial, okay? But in fact, if we rewrite our ordinances, one of the things that I would think we would be looking at is the light industrial uses that are in gateway business. We also have the same architectural standards and the same parking standards, whatever they may be, okay?
So, so do we want to change that much, say, instead of distribute, we want to say encourage parking to the size of your, parking.
What was your view? Yes. And then the last paragraph on that, smaller project commerce center zoning district is most appropriate, CCPD is the other, we've taken out any reference to our zoning ordinances. So that paragraph comes out. Economic opportunity, page 64, the appropriate zoning district at the bottom, come back.
So by the way, we're removing those images there, I never faced them yet, if you guys had images in your mind, or if there wasn't, so you can make the smartest thing to find. I will be looking for them, but I would accept.
So you want me to do the bulk and mine melt and do a transfer of mine? Let's go back to page 63 of the count. Where we marked age of apartments, condominiums. If we took, I just tried through and then footnoted that where apartments and condominiums are only permitted east of 288 on 7-Eleven in that area designated economic development. And then we went over to appropriate, specific uses, we could again include them, and then with the asterisk saying the same thing. Allison, what do you think?
I think that makes sense.
Use of those.
I don't get it.
Are you all, this is the first report? Fine with it, okay.
I want to much sooner, but you cannot touch, since I've already got some first place.
Okay. Crossroad.
We've got industrial appropriate zoning districts have to come out.
69.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Page 72, another picture problem, we've got a four-story building up there, we don't allow four-story buildings. We need, we need a, you just need something shorter, that's all.
Well, you got to use one that's going up right now. Classic granite.
Up to 45 feet, in the industrial, industrials in the press.
That has to have a weight with it, huh?
Not, not in this, not in some.
We don't, do we? Do we now from fire sample, 45?
That was part of the reasoning that the money was appropriated a couple of years back for a ladder problem, was to allow that.
Okay, so.
Could you use classic granite?
Where are we? Oh, I'm at 74. I'm at 74, there, strange situation, zoning districts. Oh, yeah, zoning districts are out, but if we go up to the village description, and you start looking at the second, third, and fourth paragraphs, it really, a lot of that discussion has to do with mixed use pieces no longer part of the village.
Didn't want to create an open overlay there eventually.
An overlay for the historic, okay? But we have, we have mixed use, okay? And we got rid of that, that was the stuff that jumped all the way to 5.2, okay? And we got rid of that, and this really fits with that designation that we got rid of, okay? So in the village, we have an undefined, we'll talk about it in a second, commercial, and we have up to two units per acre or a few blocks. Those, those are your little choices, there is no mixed use anymore. So the commercial mixed use building, well, there are no mixed use. Now we start with footprints of five and 10,000 square feet, that's no really what we want to see, I think, on the commercial side and in the village, I don't know, talk about that. Go to 74, mix of uses, the mix for commercial residential institutions uses should be accommodated. Vertically mixed use buildings. If you want hall, an apartment, or a restaurant in historic district, you want, it's back to David's definition of what's mixed, what's mixed use, okay? And so I think, what I'd like to do is want you all to find that ransom agreement, revisit, does it, does it fit in here, okay? Or does it not? That, that's all. Also, under residential density, it says residential development should include a mix of housing types. Any multifamily residential unit should be located within two to four family buildings, no, can't have two to four family buildings.
In historic, where?
So?
That's sort of where you put it.
Well, no, we don't know you can, okay? Because the density on that is going to be not what it is today, okay? We're not going to restate the zoning ordinance, we're going to say it's going to be for the ordinance.
You want to see overlay, overlay compatible with the comp plan?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, so we're doing overlay, now the underlying ordinance is still in place, okay? But we are, we are removed, we are not talking about ordinances in the comp plan that exist today, we're taking them all out, you know, appropriate zoning district, we're taking them out. So when we talk about density, the historic core, it should say overlay, not what the zoning ordinance says to that.
So you're saying residential development should include a mix of housing types, any multifamily residential unit should be located within two to four family buildings, no, can't have two to four family buildings. In historic, where?
So?
That's sort of where you put it.
Well, no, we don't know you can, okay? Because the density on that is going to be not what it is today, okay? We're not going to restate the zoning ordinance, we're going to say it's going to be for the ordinance.
You want to see overlay, overlay compatible with the comp plan?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, so we're doing overlay, now the underlying ordinance is still in place, okay? But we are, we are removed, we are not talking about ordinances in the comp plan that exists today, we're taking them all out, you know, appropriate zoning district, we're taking them out. So when we talk about density, the historic core, it should say overlay, not what the zoning ordinance says to that.
So you're saying residential development should include a mix of housing types, any multifamily residential unit should be located within two to four family buildings for above commercial uses within.
We have a half four family.
Okay.
Okay, and if you go up top, residential density, other area, there's one unit per acre to two units, that's, that's fine, the historic core should say as per overlay.
Which is yet to be defined.
But, but, but we have a bunch of all of that, okay, going throughout here, we don't have a, we don't have some of our land use categories that we're using, okay, defined in our zoning.
So I think that's a little, so where's this residential density, we say historic or as for the overlay or, that doesn't exist today?
Right, so you're saying we need to put something.
No, it's not kosher, it's not like, it's a very atypical thing to do, so I assume that's all I'm saying.
Take it out.
I'm confused there, Matt, sure. Yes. We'll take out the bottom, but go back up.
Tell me where you're at, Bill.
Don't matter, just take it out.
This. Let's go back up to the residential densities at the top, what should it say for historic form?
Yes.
Which has to be defined, okay? Now, we don't know what that is yet. No, we don't know what that is.
Well, let me, this is my question, when we did the overlay down at 7-Eleven years ago, that was a separate land use designation. So if you're saying that the historic district is going to be an overlay, why wouldn't we say historic overlay district and go ahead and define the number of units?
Or just maybe no, it's, I didn't say you could potentially have higher density in the overlay district, or a future overlay district. A, yeah, a future overlay district could be developed that allows higher.
Higher density.
Would you say that? That would be.
That was this one.
That would be, that's not normal, yeah.
I don't see us, well, let's, Mike's going to tear down his building and somehow get the graveyard moved, we don't have room to do a history breaker.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike, it's really, it was like a symmetrical thing.
We have, in the village, you can have, concerned that commercial use should be designated a way that's compatible with any neighborhooding, neighborhooding residential use. Mrs. Carmack looked at me and said, are you okay with that? You did, okay? And I said, yes, and I'm beginning to have. I'm concerned, I'm concerned that that doesn't make sense, okay? And that the commercial uses should, any, or any commercial use should probably be at one of two places, either in the historic or, or some parts of 13. You wouldn't want it all.
Oh, but you could have it on six purpose, like, possibly, you know what I mean, on the other side of.
But that's, that's only visited as gateway business, okay? So anyway, we're going to take care of that, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yes, 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 yes. The rest of the city inserted the rest.
So, you know, we don't want commercial use back by the net of the district, okay? But Michael's got three, you know, commercial pads on 6, excuse me, on 13, with his development going with, that might make sense for another one there, okay? Certainly anywhere in the village, historic village would make sense. Moving between the actual courthouse and 60 probably doesn't make sense, so.
I think keeping this in there would give a little more.
Yes, that's the even that's there for you to use, if somebody.
Yeah, that's the thing, for us to use.
Think you don't like.
Okay, okay. I'm going to ask, this is a clarification for anyone on 75, utilities and infrastructure, central water and sewer should be available to support development. We've gone a little bit further than that, I believe, we've said, well, if you're going to have residential development in the village, okay, you have to have water and sewer, and that the developer is responsible for bringing, okay? That's what that whole two units per acre from now are used about. Is this clear enough? Is this clear enough? Planners, is this clear enough so that that gets through?
Is that a requirement in our zoning ordinance?
So I just want to make sure from your, from your standpoint, is this clear enough so that you feel someone comes in and says, well, no, you can't have two units per acre, you're running water and sewer. Now, I understand the ordinance will. Page seventy-seven. Paragraph down, starts small scale multi-family building should resemble large single-family home. We will eliminate that, that out. And then the last sentence doesn't end. Eighty-one, Carter, mixed use, isn't it?
Yeah.
If we go to page eighty-seven, that were examples of appropriate development by land use category. On eighty-seven, we have neighborhood residential. Those kinds that you want for seven eleven. Eighty-seven, there. That's only going to be in seven eleven.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. First one.
Okay, I just. On eighty-eight, village, mixed use building, building with traditional architecture now. We've done away with mixed use. And then on page eighty-nine, Carter, mixed use, both of those are, are started with mixed use. Page ninety-two. We're, right hand, we're talking about neighborhood residential, which is now only on seven eleven. We're talking about Route sixty. We've got height net.
We're on ninety-two?
So it's referring to Route sixty and it needs just to refer to seven eleven. Back, I'm sorry, back up on ninety-one, on the right hand, left hand column, we're talking about parking. This gets back to that whole thing of continuous strip parking, before I had that discussion, where should it be? Okay, is it going to be on the side or is it going to be on the back? Whatever we're doing in that other section, what we need to do here. Which is gateway, which is gateway business. Ninety-three. Paragraph, new development should include sidewalk. Sidewalk can only develop.
Where appropriate.
Where are you going? Oh, I was on ninety-three.
All right, I've got comments on ninety-four, that's fair. This is a question for staff, yeah, was their discussions with the planning mission. But these designations of the different styles, you know, at different points going up and down the road. Is that really practical, for example, South Creek? And South Creek, you know, is a shopping center that already has an architectural facade. So to come in and say, we're going to do one that's, just use an example incorporates Greek revivals, it's chimneys, whatever. Does this really work? And so how is this going to be working? I mean, we're going to give them a pattern book? You know, like we do for the architectural review. What's Shaw's thoughts?
This is a guide, this is a guidebook. These are examples from the guidebook.
Okay, they're examples from the guidebook. But again, all right, let's take Shaw books for example. Okay, they would come in, I guess, South Creek. Okay? So they're going to look like Georgian classic revival or Cape Cod styles.
They got, they got a way to go.
At practice, we don't use these flat rocks, school grass, except big designations. We just use the pattern book, so anything in there is good, like we'll accept that. And if we get that, that's like kind of lucky. Right now, we're like, most places we're saying, can you add some shudders? Like, so it's kind of brutal. So that, that's the tool we use to ask for better architecture. We don't, we haven't used it yet, but it exists.
But for this page, you know, where we're specifying a certain look for different locations, is that realistic?
It's realistic and we can ask, yeah, with this page, we can ask for that if that's the style we want in that area.
I'm not, I'm not even sure that I'm in agreement with all these designs, you know, that are specified by location. I mean, I would be more inclined to go with, okay, what would meet our criteria for well-designed architectural, you know, and use the design book in general and take a look at what's around there today and how we can uh, enhance what's there today going forward.
And that's what we use in practice today, because this doesn't exist.
I would eliminate this page. That would be all of those pages, I think. It's not, we have the guidebook, we have the planning mission review, I think that's.
We agree.
Yeah.
Page ninety-six. Primary goals, growth and development, creative environment, mixed use, village four. Creating a walkable mixed use area within the core, which is, is this the oval, is this the historic we're talking about there? Or are we, are we, or is the mixed use category hungover from? Because we are not really creating a place realistic where people can live or can travel. Michael Potter's the only one that can work there. There are no jobs there. There are no jobs there unless, unless you, unless you, John Seller walks across the street.
You can't.
Page ninety-seven, just develop along Route sixty, left hand column. Corridor mixed use is still in there. Just as it is on column one, back over on ninety-seven. Next to last paragraph on, on the white side. Seventy-seven, to have the next lap on, that's a corridor mixed use, which is going down. And it also, it's on page ninety-eight.
I'd like to go back to page ninety-five of the map. Shows these areas, flat rocks, food courts, and South Creek, boring. Oh, okay. And those, those are the noted areas that we're giving names to, I'm sure.
Back to ninety-eight? Are you done with ninety-eight? We covered a corridor mixed use.
Yes.
All right, so ninety-nine.
Map on ninety-nine. Uh, we just two properties, we just rezone for Archie. Look, make it purple there now. They're no longer purple, we're just taking the map.
Yes, so this, I mean, this is, so we used, we added one a few weeks ago, and it is future, so if you, like.
It technically could be.
Yeah, but we just.
Correct, you downzoned it, but that would be, this is.
We downzoned it because if, if you look down into whole, it's not practical.
So you want to move it over, basically, and make that.
Yeah, 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 it should be, we just, we've just gone through a rezoning for that and said, wow, this is not going to be.
Right. That's it. What do you guys think about doing our closed session? Yeah, just giving transportation and doing that and then going into a closed session. Are you all fine with that? Okay, uh, we'll have our second public comment period. Anyone who can speak, please state your name and address for the record. I don't hear anybody on Zoom.
Zooms, please.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period. County administrator comments?
Just quick comment to Allison, if you could pull up my chart. COVID numbers are getting slightly worse. I want to show you a chart. Uh, that we have. The hospitalizations are not growing since July one. Excuse me, deaths are not growing, hospitalizations also not growing since July one. But you can see on the chart here, this is from March, for eight, basically sixteen months now that, oh, I had it. And choose not to snow days, but all days. So you'll see, we are getting close to the peak period of the experience back in.
You have to, you have to give me a chance.
You'll see in the far right inside of that chart, the yellow line is creeping up to, is that Palatine? So we're high. Right there, don't touch.
Stop moving everything, I can't.
That's perfect, right there. You can see the far right inside, September one, the yellow line is just about peaking, you know, slightly less than where we peaked in the peak area from, at Christmas time area from late November to late February. So we're getting close. But the good news is we're not experiencing hospitalizations or deaths, but we're experiencing an increase in cases. Uh, so that's, we're getting a just want to let you know that, you know, if we keep on this path, you know, we, we got to figure out, do we, do we try to pull back at all as far as operations? To do some home, work at home type scenarios like we did back in the day. But right now, I think we're still okay. It's still full force ahead in our offices. Uh, and we don't, as far as clinics are concerned, I think we're not in the mode where we'd be in a clinic business again right yet because of availability. But, but it is an issue. You can see, uh, what you see on the news is true for Palatine. What's going on with county employees? We're having, we're experiencing, we're experiencing a pretty, a decent number of, you know, exposures and, and a few sicknesses throughout the office. Just enough to, you know, it's a conversation piece throughout, you know, the office. People are being smart. They're wearing their mask when they're with customers, wearing a mask with their workloads most of the time. And we get, we're trying to, we're tighter on that, but but it is a concern that if we continue on this trip, on this path, you know, we might have to come, you know, and start doing some more aggressive safety measures. That's my, that was my comment for county administration.
Thank you. Board comments? None. All right, now, Mr. Smither, do you want to authorize what's going in to close that, so you need it?
Got it right here. Well, as the board's two files, Palatine County desires to discuss a closed meeting of following matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, for resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body concerning the county administration. Whereat pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one of the code of the union, such discussions may occur in closed meetings. Now therefore be resolved that the board's two files, Palatine County does hereby authorize discussion of the four sets of matters in closed meetings. I do need to give a
Roll call.
Roll call on that. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Firely.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack. Are we back in?
Yes.
Okay, to, to best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and that only such public business matters as were identified in motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Roll call for that. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Firely.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
I think that's it, meeting adjourned.